Please join me in the platte. May I, would you take the role, please?
De Young.
Here.
Crayna Horse.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Hockton.
Here.
Dan Strahlin.
Here.
And Carl Stone will be joining in a little bit.
All right, City Council has adopted a code of civility as elected officials. We've learned to promote civility through extending respect to others, listening to understand, disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively, speaking up to address incivility. And as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast for Pella TV, so anyone who wishes to speak to council needs to come to that microphone over there so that people watching can hear and see you on camera. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Ben Strahlin, De Young, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no, Mandy, please call the role.
Dan Strahlin.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Crayna Horse.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Hockton.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding our, any agenda item, please come to that microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Jonathan Erickson, 506 Drew Drive. Just wanted to speak in support of a few things and then possibly give a couple of items for consideration. I support maintaining the 1075 tax rate for the city of Pella, as we've discussed previously. I also support increasing service-related fees for activities in the city of Pella. I think a lot of people look at increase in service fees as just that things are going up, but I see it similar to the airline industry where you used to get a bag checked included with your ticket, and not everybody checked a bag, and then they started checking bags, charging for it. In the same way, people who want to use these services in town will pay for them rather than making everyone opt in and supplementing it with property tax, so I think it's a good way to do it. I also think it's a good idea to contribute surplus funds from our electric fund over to the general fund. I wasn't aware that we were doing this on a regular basis. I think we saw this used in the past to donate a surplus to another area of the budget, and I would support this so that we can pay for the list of projects in town that we either have already agreed to or are looking to work on. One thing I did not see on that list, and I may have forgotten if we funded it a different way, was the improvements to the Kiwanis tennis park, tennis courts. So if it's not being funded a different way, I'd like to see that added to the list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we will move into our budget session number one for our fiscal year '25, '26 budget capital improvement program. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. Normally, I say I'd refer to everyone's attention for a short presentation. Actually, tonight's presentations could be, if traditional, somewhat lengthy, but there's a lot of good information out there. And as Mayor DeWort stated, what we're going to be discussing this evening is the proposed 2026, fiscal year 2026 budget. It would actually be the budget here that would start on July 1st of this year and extend through June 30th of 2026.
Just a second, Mike. Are you muting us during this? Because I'm chewing on potato chips now. I can't. Wait.
Okay. So extend through June 30th of 2026. We'll also be, for each department that is giving presentation, not only for tonight, but also tomorrow night, we're going to be reviewing their five-year capital improvement programs as well. Now, just a brief summary when we talk about the city's overall 2006 proposed, 26 proposed budget. What we're proposing is maintaining the city's property tax rate at $10.75 per $1,000 of taxable valuation. We're also proposing increases in both the water and wastewater utility fees, and those are related to capital improvements for those two utilities. Now, stated throughout the evening, there was also fee increases associated with this budget, both with recreational fees that support general fund services as well as development fees that support general fund services as well. And we'd also like to mention, as far as employee compensation, we have budgeted compensation increase right around four and a half percent for the city's workforce as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, when we talk about the proposed 2026 budget, we have a high-mic breakdown of the city's revenues that we have up here. As you can see, total revenue for the city what's being proposed is just shy of $80 million for 2026. Normally, whenever you talk about city budgets and city finances, property taxes always gets a lot of attention, and as you can see when it looks at the city's budget, it's actually 7.6, or $7.6 million on an $80 million budget. Most of the city's budget is associated with utility revenue, so that's an important takeaway that we have. And then when we look at total expenditures, what's being proposed this evening, we have total expenditures of just over $75,170,000, which are proposed increase or projected increase of right around $4.8 million in reserves. The lion's share of that increase in reserves is what we believe would be unspent proposed bond proceeds specifically associated with the city's long-term facility plan, and we'll get into that more, go into more detail tomorrow night. The five-year capital improvement program that we're going to be discussing tonight and tomorrow night, if you were to add up all of those years, all the proposed improvements is about approximately $129 million for the city of Pella as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, when we talk about property taxes, it's important to note that traditionally, the city of Pella's had one of the lowest property tax rates in the state of Iowa, and this year is no different. As you can see, we have similar sized cities throughout the state of Iowa that are listed up on the board. The key takeaway is when you look at the average of these cities for this last fiscal year, they're just over $16 in the property tax rate. The city of Pella's is about 66% of that at $10.75. And it really doesn't matter what size of city that you're comparing us through throughout the state of Iowa, the city has one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Iowa, and that's just contributed to the annual stewardship of the mayor and council through the years for the city. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. We're going to be talking a lot about utilities tomorrow night, but when we look at utilities, the one benchmark that we have that's kind of an apples-to-apples comparison is in the electric utility. The American Public Power Association, on an annual basis, does a survey of electric rates throughout the state. They survey approximately 143 electric utilities. The city of Pella had 16th lowest rates in the state of Iowa. Now, that information's somewhat dated, it's 2022, but I would also like to mention that we've been gaining several spots each year on the survey, and one of the reasons why we've been gaining spots each year is way back in 2011, 2012, the city at the time committed to a rather large and extensive capital improvement program to transition from producing a portion overload over to a full requirements contract with Missouri River Energy Services. At the time, we decreased our electric rate by 3% back in 2011, and we haven't maintained them since then. And so when I look forward on this and gaining traction on this from a market competitive standpoint, I anticipate that that's going to continue in the future. And one of the big reasons why I believe that's going to continue in the future is anytime you talk about electric rates, about 80% of your cost for an electric utility is typically associated with power supply and transmission. And with us, we feel we have a very solid source of power supply for the community. Our contract with Missouri River goes through the year 2057, so a lot of hard work went into this, but it's paying its dividends on that as well. All other utility rates for the city of Pella, when we benchmark our utility rates, and it doesn't really matter whether it's water, wastewater, fees on this, we believe we're extremely competitive with those utilities as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the personnel is concerned, we mentioned overall it's about four and a half percent increase. It's really that driven into two components. First component is what we call a salary scale increase, and so what that is normally is noted is we're talking about moving the entire scale up a percent and a half. The city is on a matrix, and as far as the step increases, each step increase is about 3%. Most of our employees, we believe, won't be, are eligible for a step increase next year, and that's typically about 3%. So if you add those two together, that's where we're getting four and a half percent. But the big takeaway is, if you look at that four and a half percent, that matches the employment cost index at December 31st of last year. That's also the last index that we have as far as measurement goes, and so at this time, it's important to note that the overall compensation close matches what Tommy Kertu is the ECI. Equally important to note, and that should actually be '26, '27, we are proposing a compensation study, not in this upcoming fiscal year, but in future years. And the reason is, is when you look at the city's workforce, first and foremost, it's important that we retain and attract quality employment, employees to the city of Pella. But secondly, with the property tax legislation in the state of Iowa, and this is just reality for a lot of cities, when you look at the matrix, and we said that our matrix is broken down into two components, proposing to increase the overall scale, a lot of employees call that the cost of living increase, and we also have step increases. In the foreseeable future, it would be a big stretch to see that more of your compensation system is going to have to be based, or most likely will be based, on merit-based components on this. Now, we're not proposing that, but that's one of the items that we want to take a look at, and that's one of the reasons why we're looking at a compensation study. The other item out there, truthfully, is just to make sure, once again, that we're market-competitive as well. So with this budget, you'll also note that there's no new employees being proposed forward as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead. A little bit of history as far as the city's workforce is, you can see over the last 10 years, if this was 10 years ago, we would have had right around a little over 90 full-time employees. We're now up to 126, and what that's attributed to is just the new services that we've undertaken over the last 10 years specifically. We started a telecommunications utility. We'd also be ambulance service for the city of Pella, and we've also taken over the boss line and golf course. So if you add all three of those service levels, that is the driving force behind the increase in employment at the city of Pella. Okay, Mandy, let's go ahead. Now, as far as key issues that you're going to hear throughout the presentation, these are just big picture key takeaways, is property tax reform in Iowa's had a significant impact on the city of Pella's budget, just like it has for the other 900 and some odd cities in the state of Iowa. And basically, it boils down to, when it's done for cities, it's reduced annual property tax growth. I will re-remise, if I didn't mention, that there is pending property tax legislation that's being considered by the state as well. And somewhere, when we've discussed this before, the state is at the policymaker level, they set the rules for cities, we need to abide with them. The good news is, between the combination of the city's financial standing, where we're at right now, what I believe, and also our workforce and the leadership of the mayor and council, I believe we're in a good position to need to be pending our upcoming property tax legislation as well. The other tricky item or item that's really complicated matters is when you deal with utilities, specifically on the water and wastewater side, and you start getting into federal mandates. We begin talking, we'll be talking extensively tomorrow night about two mandates that we're currently facing, both on the waterside and wastewater side as well. What those could do is trigger some rather large capital improvements in the future, and capital improvements usually mean proposed rate increases as well, with more to come on that tomorrow night. So, Mandy, let's go ahead. The other issues that I want to make sure that we do mention, and these are just challenges that the city of Pella has, but once again, they're prevalent throughout the state of Iowa. When we look at budgets, in particular fiscal years, and plan for capital improvements, one of the key items we've always got to consider is aging facilities and infrastructure on there. And they've had those hand-in-hand with some of the items that we've seen at the city is usually when you deal with aging infrastructure, aging facilities, or any type of construction period, usually, and what we've had in the last couple of years, is that we deal with escalating construction costs as well. That's just one of the challenging items. Anytime you talk about municipal finances. So, Mandy, let's go ahead. Okay. Now, overall, with the presentation, both tonight, tomorrow night, if you're sitting at home watching this on Pella Fiber or in attendance this evening, you may be wondering, what does this mean to me, being a taxpayer and a ratepayer for the city of Pella? What we believe, if council were to approve this proposed budget, maintain the city's property tax rate at status quo of 1075. Because of the utility rate increases that we have here, the driving force, we believe the typical residential home in Pella will pay approximately $97 more to the city of Pella next year than they are currently this year as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead. Now, tomorrow night, I want to just mention this and give council a plenty of notice. Tomorrow night, we're going to be finishing up our conclusion or summary. What usually happens is that you can be on the interactive portion of the meeting where we start looking to, for council, for the guidance on this. Tomorrow night, I plan on asking these questions up on the board, and we will go through them one by one. But what I would just say is, the public hearing for the proposed budget, I believe, Mandy, is on April 15. As hard as it is to believe, when you start adding in public notice times on it, we don't have a lot of excess time for the April 15 public hearing date on it. So what we would ask, if there's any item that's being proposed, or that you're in disagreement with any item, either whether it's one of these main items that you had up here, a Department of Operating Budget, or a Department of Capital Improvement Plans, we're going to go through them one by one, what I would just ask is that you alert us to this, and you let us know so we can discuss it. Because truthfully, once we get to the public hearing after this is done, we've got to post our notice this week yet, and when you look at all the legislative requirements, we're just barely making it on the April 15 time. So if there's an issue with the city's budget, we'd like to be able to address it tomorrow night, forth throughout the presentation. So if anything that you have questions on, please make sure you speak up. All righty. And Mayor, as far as the overall budget is concerned, this is a good summary. We're going to transition. If there's any questions on the overall budget or what's being proposed, I have a brief summary on the general fund that we're going to get into the presentations tonight.
Any questions at this time?
Okay. A lot of the presentations we're going to be talking about tonight deal with the city's general fund, and when people talk about city government, they typically associate with general fund departments, and we have a few of them just showing up here on the board. I think they have talked about police, fire, ambulance, library, parks and rec on it. Overall, when we talk about the city's general fund services, what's being proposed in this budget is a proposed balanced budget. We're also proposing to maintain the city's property tax at $10.75, and I think one of the prevailing themes that you'll hear throughout the evening is what this budget is centered on is maintaining existing service levels of the citizens of Pella. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as factors, typically, I'd say in most years, there's always these loose items that I, that I, you know, it's hard to get your arms around. We have a few of them, like this is not uncommon about this time of year. But one of the items that could impact the city's budget is pending property tax legislation at the State House. While I feel good at the financial position that we're in, but it doesn't mean that there may not be additional property tax legislation that may make us go back and rethink a few things. I think council's aware of that. The other items that we have is some partnership agreements that we have with both Marion County and Pella Regional Health Center. Marion County has a local option redistribution agreement. Reason why we received that local option redistribution agreement is we believe the city of Pella is responsible for producing about 65% of sales tax in Marion County. But when you look at the local option distribution as a state formula, we receive less than 30% according to the state formula. That agreement of Marion County expires on December 31st of this year, and the county informed us that before they renegotiate it, they want to get through the state cycle or the state legislative cycle just to make sure there are no changes on their end to things before they renegotiate with the city of Pella. Likewise, we also have a transport agreement with Pella Regional Health Center. This was the initial year of the transport agreement. Expires on December 31st of this year, and since the agreement's just still in its infancy, we have not begun renegotiations with the hospital on that as well. But if you look at both of those, those are some significant funds that are included in this budget as well. That would also be remiss to say, when we talk about maintaining the status quo budget, one of the realities is, it's not reality, it's one of the possibilities, is sometime during fiscal year 2026, there may be a referendum on ambulance services in Marion County as well. If an essential services tax was passed, and that's a big if, likewise, equally a big if, is that distribution formula on how the new tax would be distributed to the municipalities, but that could be a positive revenue source for the city of Pella as well. Contemplating keeping the tax rate the same, when you look at this, just some of the uncertainties that we have, which is not atypical on the year, plus potential referendum for the essential services, those were some of the reasons why we are proposing maintaining the existing rate of $10.75 and a status quo budget as far as general fund services are concerned. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, overall, when we talk about the general fund, if you recall, we talked about a budget that's $75 million, and really, what I tell people, and whenever you talk about city budgets, it's wise to look at us as a bunch of little businesses that we have, and so we kind of categorize the general fund department as its own little business component that we have, but when you talk about the general fund, it gets a lot of attention. But overall, it's right around a $14.1 million budget, and as you can see, one of the transformations that's happened in the state of Iowa and over our budget through the years through property tax legislation on this is property taxes are making up less and less of the total revenue sources, which means service fees are picking up a bigger share of the total cost of providing general fund services, and that's a key component. That's been a key trend, rather, and we look for that trend to continue on in the future as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please.
Excuse me, just a minute. You said the local option sales tax would be renegotiated at the end of the year?
Well, what I was told by the supervisors is their preference is to read, to start renegotiating the agreement as soon as the state legislative cycle is over. So I anticipate sometime as soon as the state cleans the legislative cycle, we'll begin renegotiation of the local option tax, the local option redistribution agreement.
What's up there right now is a total ripoff.
Yes, sir.
On the loss tax, we're going to get more than that on the loss tax. I mean, that's just the portion that was coming from the county, $415,000.
Yes, you are, you are correct, Councilmember Butler. Yeah, total revenues from the loss tax, and when we talk about that tomorrow night, we'll double check, so I may be a little bit off. Should be right around 1.6 to 1.7, somewhere right around in that eight area. This is just the Marion County redistribution.
Yeah, well, where's the rest of it in that stack?
It is under that miscellaneous thing, item. As far as the general fund's not included up here because local option, under the way in Iowa it's operated, local option is a special revenue fund on here as well, so it's not reported with general fund revenues. But because it is somewhat confusing up here, how we use the Marion County redistribution is, it all goes towards property tax relief, that's why it's included as far as a general fund revenue.
I believe, if I, I think there was projected 2.2 million total loss tax in this budget between redistribution and the book.
Sounds about right.
So where, where do we see the special fund revenue?
What we're going to have at tomorrow night is a part of the capital facilities plan, not the long-term facilities plan, excuse me, what we have, because there's two eligible, three eligible sources for local option taxes. One of them is road use, the tax, road improvements in the city of Pella, and the second item that we have is community center, renovation of the city community center, and the third item is proposed indoor recreation center. So we are, we're going to cover local option tomorrow night. Okay. Now, as far as balancing the city's general fund strategies that we employ to do that and present budget tonight, really centered on these four items that we have up here, you're going to see in this budget tomorrow night, when we cover the finite zoning budget, an increase, proposed increase in development fees, somewhere between 20 to 30%. Normally, what I would say is you need to be careful with development fees, and I still believe you need to be careful with development fees, because development's one of the life bloods of a community, but in looking at our fees and comparing our fees to not only the surrounding areas, but the Mid-Metrol area, we believe they can be increased as well. Recreational fees, once some of these improvements are fully completed and in place and operational, we are proposing an increase in recreational fees between 20 to 30% as well, and we'll go over those tomorrow night as well. Tonight, when we talk about the fire department's budget, we have some fairly extensive capital improvements that's included by here, CIP. We're proposing an increase or charging rent to the Lake Prairie Fire District for use of our fire station, and we'll get into that very shortly with the fire department's presentation this evening. And I think you would look at departments as you review their budgets, and we're talking about the supplies and services component of their budget, but it's been a status quo, and they were maintained in the existing 2025 levels as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, one of the key items for the city's general fund, and we'll talk about this from the electric side of things, is we are proposing an increase with electric contributions to the city's general fund. This has been a staple of the electric utility for a lot of years. In fact, a lot of utilities have adopted franchise fees or franchise ordinances, both for electric and gas utilities. In our case, it's only for the city of Pella's municipal electric utility that we have. So when we talk about these fees, it would only apply to the city's electric utility. What we're proposing on the operational side to assist with the general fund is an increase in that contribution from 4.1% of revenues up to 5.8%. We're also stating that we may need up to an additional 1.2% of electric revenues to apply potential debt service projects for the general fund. Now, when we talk about the general fund, Mandy, let's go ahead and list those projects up for council. These are some of the projects that have been either approved or in the process of being approved by the city council, and what we stated during the approval is that we may potentially issue a, what's called a general obligation bond issue to pay for these projects. Anytime you hear the word "general obligation," you always should associate it that there may be an increase in what's called the city's debt service levy for this. And so that 1.2% of electric revenues would be used to pay for the debt service for these projects that you see up on, on the board. And once again, these are projects that are currently being considered by the city council or have already been approved by the Pella city council. I would also like to mention that we're looking at strategies where we may be able to use cash on hand to fund these projects as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, overall, if we took the 5.8 plus the additional percent, 1.2%, add those together, it's about 7%, we'd be looking at a little over $1.6 million from the electric utility in the city's general fund. And I think from the utility side of things, you always want to take a look at what is reasonable. Anytime you talk about transfers or contributions to the city's general fund, Missouri Rivers has a study on an annual basis where they survey 80, now the list is up to 89 municipal utilities. When they look at the contribution from this electric utility over to this respective general fund, the average on that list was 7.6% of general fund revenues. So again, we feel even if the city council were to go up to 7%, that is very much reasonable based off comparable data that we've received from Missouri River on that item. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the first department that we have up, you go right there.
Can I break in? So I just want to make a comment before we go through the details, because we're going to be deep in the details for the next few hours, but I want to just, I want to make sure that credit gets given to where credit is due. You know, for this whole last year, we've had many conversations, we've heard many comments from, talking about how we were going to run a deficit in the general fund this year. Mike has done an unbelievable job of crafting this budget, where we are, we are looking at a, a breakeven general fund budget despite the property tax legislation, legislate, legislation that's already happened to limit how much we can grow based on valuation growth. The latest I'm seeing out of the legislature, I think, is going to be a positive for us if it passes, because right now, that cap on percentage increase does not take into account new valuations. They work against us, basically, but the newest legislation that I've seen discussed is that they would accept the new, the new valuations that come online will not hurt us. And that's really important for the city of Pella, because we are a growing community. I just drove through Prairie Ridge last night. There's not an empty lot on that whole project. We are a growing community that, when you look at the We are a growing community that, when you look at the needs for housing and, and everything else that's happening, our valuations are going to continue to grow dramatically, and that, that's going to help us a lot moving forward. The transfer, increasing the transfer from the electric fund, I believe, is one hundred percent the right thing to do, because if you think about it, and I don't have the number, but I'm going to estimate that the city of Pella, over the last sixty years or eighty years or ever long we've had our own electric utility, has probably invested in excess of a hundred million dollars into that utility. So it's ours. We're the owner of it. The city is the owner of it. So for us to use the profits, and it's a very profitable utility, for us to use the profit off that to fill some holes in our, in our general fund budget is absolutely the right thing to do, in my opinion. The other thing we've, we've, and I don't hear what I'm not saying, the ambulance service, we have an unbelievable service. I met with the CEO of the hospital this week just to see how things were going with our new agreement. They're extremely pleased, extremely pleased with the service that they're getting. I didn't get any commitment for any more funds moving forward, but they are extremely pleased with how it's working. And so, but it, it put a nine hundred thousand dollar burden on our general fund. And as the chief has reminded me many times, that's the cost of the service. It's not, we can't be talking about running a deficit, that's just the cost of our service, a very important service to this community. And I believe that we are moving in the right direction to generate more revenue for that service. It's either going to come through the, the EMS tax, which I'm on the committee, we've been snowed out twice now, so we have, we've had, we've only had one meeting. I'm not real sure about where that'll go. We'll find out at some point this year. But I think in the long term, I think that there's some opportunities for us to generate some additional revenue, either with a longer-term agreement with the hospital or, or adjusting the service area or getting an EMS tax. So I think moving forward, we have a chance to generate some more revenue from that service to reduce that. The other thing that I, I really like about this budget, and I appreciate what Mike has done, we're taking care of our employees. Best asset we have in the city of Pella is our employees. And so we can, with all the worry and all the talk about deficits, and I pay attention to what's going on, you know, the city of Des Moines is trying to fill a seventeen million dollar hole in their budget. We're, we're looking at a balanced budget. There's, there's, and we're really cutting costs when you think about it, because Mike has asked all the departments to hold the line on their, other than employee spending. Put in an inflation rate in there, we're really cutting costs, because everything costs more. So with having a whole, in real dollars, actual dollars, that's very positive. But, but we are going to be able to give raises, give higher pay to our employees, and those, again, I think that's the most valuable asset we have in the city of Pella. So I want to commend Mike and staff for the budget that they put together. There was a whole lot of worry about it, but as usually the case, Pella responds to, to these kinds of situations and does the right thing and takes care of it. So just want to make sure that we give credit to Mike and to his staff for what they've put together, and all our department heads, for what they've done to, to balance this budget. It's really important.
Thank you, Mayor. And from the first department head, Chief Kogard, who will, Chief is taking the CEO to do a brief overview of where they stand. The fire department, again, valuable service to the city of Pella. Now, overall, when you look at the city's investment or the net general fund budget, we actually have a decrease in there. The reason why is that we are proposing a rental payment to the Lake Prairie Fire District right around thirty-seven thousand dollars that we have next year on this. And with the Lake Prairie Fire Department, basically, the reason for this is if you look at Chief, he's going to go through his five-year CIP. There's an air compressor unit that would be used by both the city's trucks and the Lake Prairie Fire District trucks. Important note, before we get started on that, some of the reasons why we're talking about a rental payment on there, is Lake Prairie and the city of Pella shared fire service for a lot of years, it's benefited both the city as well as the township, and it's a very good partnership on it, and it's one of the items that I think has been a benefit to both, both the city and the township on this. When we look at the station itself, there's some significant capital improvements that are being proposed, one of them's a replacement of the overhead doors in the five-year CIP. Another item that we have is potentially an air compressor unit that would be utilized by both Lake Prairie and the city of Pella. And so we've had some initial conversations with the trustees on this. We will be writing them a proposal if council recommends this, as far as this budget, as far as a rental payment for the station on, on this as well. So I want to make sure council understands that the reason why the net general fund budget is proposed to decrease is there is a proposed rental payment in there for the Lake Prairie Fire District. And they may be wondering about the overall station cost for the budget. It's my understanding, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we look at floor space as far as the truck floor space, Lake Prairie is about half the floor space of the fire department, right around there. So. Okay. So, Chief, if you want to take it from here.
Okay, on the CIP here, the first item is the aerial fire truck. If you recall, that contract was signed early last year. So, good news is it's all locked down, and that is the price. The bad news is we don't get it until 2028. However, it's not an item that you could throw out, because it's signed, so. Next is the one Mike referred to, the building air compressor. That is something that we proposed due to the fact that trucks with air brakes, when they sit, leak out small minute amounts of air over time. And when you start that truck, it builds the air back up, and it takes some time. Typical for fire stations, and any of this has been built probably in the last twenty years, would have this built into the station, where there's a centralized station air system, and it's piped to all the truck bays. The trucks then would be plugged into a shoreline air system. That maintains the air pressure of the parked truck for as long as need be. Without it, your truck loses its air, and you have to wait before you can release the brakes and therefore go in route. So that is what we're trying to alleviate. Our trucks, some are worse than others, but all air brake trucks leak slightly. Our trucks might sit for a day or two, three at a time. We have them on a weekly truck starting checklist, but even that's not enough for the typical leaks. So that's what we've proposed, and it's, and because it's used by both entities, in discussions with Mike, that's why we believe that the increased rent would help cover part of the cost, and the trustees side or the Lake Prairie Township side of our department would benefit as well. Any questions on that?
Well, it sounds to me like you need the air compressor now.
Well, our worst offender is plugged into a temporary system that we rigged up. The rest is, it's okay. We're, we're okay, so we're getting by. It's not that we would have to do this immediately. Again, keep in mind that if, if a new station were to be built, this would be built into it, and this money wouldn't have to be spent. But that's, previous leadership was, was under that impression, that's why this has been put off for as long as it has. But in the meantime, it can certainly be built into our current station, and I believe the timeframe there is adequate.
Okay.
The next item, then, building maintenance, that is just a yearly building maintenance CIP that we put in there. We are currently making small improvements using that ten thousand wherever we can. We've made improvements in our meeting room, we've done some electrical improvements as we're able, and so that is just kind of an ongoing, a small item fund that we use to just consistently make some improvements around the station. The electrical system in that building is barely adequate. We just had electricians in there lately putting in some new circuits as our trucks are plugged in, not only to air, but also to electrical, to charge up everything that's onboard the truck while it's parked. We've been tripping breakers, and then we don't know it, and then the truck is dead. So we've had some of those issues. So that's what that fund is for, is things like that. So any questions on that? So the next item would be the fire station overhead doors, as, as Mike mentioned. The doors, I believe, were installed when the building, when the police station was built, and we had some improvements at that time. The aerial bay was built. I think all the new, all the doors were installed new then, and operators. That was about mid-nineties, something like that. So you're looking at the doors aging out, and they're heavy doors, they're large doors. Currently, one of the operators leaks oil out of his gearbox, so we've had to drape a, a tarp underneath that to catch it so it doesn't leak all over our fire truck. So that's just one of, one of the issues on an operator. We think that, I should say, we looked into repairing the doors, new components, but that was going to be caught prohibited, it costs just as much to replace the door. So that's, that's the project that we're proposing. We'd be happy to work with whatever, whatever local group is necessary to come up with style, color, things like that. We're mindful of that, but in the meantime, we, we just think that over the course of time, we should be looking at this seriously, replacing the doors. Again, this is something, as Mike mentioned, that Lake Prairie would benefit from this as well, so. Questions?
Yeah, how much would it cost to replace the leaky?
Ah, that would probably take a new operator, so we, we could, we could do that. I really don't know. We didn't outprice that separately, but.
I know that leaking oil thing is a nuisance.
Terribly.
Yeah.
Our, our newest pumper truck that the city bought a few years ago sits right underneath it, so annoying.
That'd be interesting to know.
Okay, okay. Next item, portable radios. This is something we put in, in anticipation of Chief McSheehe's radio upgrade. So this is for ten portables. That's the final leg of all of our radio updates that we need. This would be funded, five portables by Lake Prairie and five by city. That fifty-five thousand is total, so city's obligation there would be half. Any questions on that? Replacement firefighter bunker gear is a fund that we keep in place for, I guess you could say, emergency use, if emergency replacement of torn or damaged gear. We have avoided getting into this past several years, because we have new gear that, that was in previous year's CIP that comes up this year. So after mid-year, when this budget starts, we will be purchasing new gear based on the old CIP. So we've been putting off buying piecemeal pieces until we can outfit the entire department, which happens this year.
How much is that?
That was, I believe, a hundred and sixty-five thousand total?
Is it on that list that we have?
It would have been on last year's.
Yeah, well, some, what's on that list was on last year's.
Okay. So half of one sixty-five would be the city's obligation. Based on, I think, fifty-five hundred per firefighter, thirty sets of gear, that's what we base it on, so.
So I don't see it on the list that we have on page nine, so it's from last year.
Yep. It's just not spent yet, so. The date code on our year is late, late 2015, and it's a ten-year cycle, so we have until the end of year to get it replaced. We're looking at ordering probably sometime this summer. Any other questions?
Thanks, Chief. Thanks for the dedication of the group. I think we're going to do a little recognition here Thursday night.
Yep.
We sure appreciate the dedication of the volunteers. Amazing to me, if there's a waiting list of volunteer, right?
Yep, there kind of is, yeah. Thank, appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you.
Takes a long time to get a ladder truck.
It does, very much.
Well, Chief, Mike Sheehy is up in the office now, so Captain Hossi will be filling in for him, what Captain Hossi can see, just a financial overview. When you look at the police department's net general fund budget, you can see the overall increase of four point three nine percent. The numbers were somewhat deceiving up here. Last year, if you recall, we had a grant for the police department to add an additional officer. That grant also had capital expenditures. That was both, when you look at fast forward to this year, we both have a decrease in revenues and offsetting expenditures. In addition, as part of our review on what we have as far as the supplies and services with the department, is typically the department is budgeted for officer turnover, in particular, the outfitting officers and sending them to the academy. While we've been adding talks with the department is transitioning those funds over to the city's contingency accounts. So if we have turnover in the police department, instead of the police department having a line item for equipment or academy fees for an officer, we would pull it from the city's contingency, and typically, what we've looked at that in the past is we would adjust it for budget amendments. Now, in the past, because it takes a significant amount of time to turn, for turnover at the police department, usually what's happened is there's salary savings that pays for the new officer as well. So when we look at the decreases in supplies and services, those are the two big items that we have in the department's budget, both the grant, as well as how we're budgeting for potential turnover at the police department. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and turn the floor over to Captain Hossi.
All right, thank you, Mike. Just a few items here for the Pella Police Department, moving into these coming years for our CIP. Item number one up there is our body camera replacement. Five years ago, about six years ago, we added body cameras to the agency. Body cameras are a necessity in law enforcement today. Like most electronics, they have reached their end of life, they're at least coming up on it, and as that, as that process comes, we'll need to replace those body cameras. That initial cost of the fifty-four thousand will be to outfit the entire department with new body cameras that will sync with our in-car cameras, making that a seamless process. It also includes software and other, other items needed to download and to make them evidentiary sound as well. So that two thousand eight hundred and fifty is service fees after that initial three-year contract is up. Our, our next one is the Central Iowa Regional Tactical Team. That is a joint team that we are with five other agencies in the surrounding area that is basically a rapid response team, you might have heard it referred to as a SWAT team. A lot of that cost is training, training ammunition, training supplies, gas mask filters, and other equipment necessary to maintain that, that team, maintain the operational readiness of that team. And that's what that seven thousand dollars is, is used for, is mainly training equipment and the operational readiness. The next one is the Community Protection Sirens, and that is the outdoor warning system that every year we budget for general maintenance and, and supplies. And last year, we had to do some maintenance on one, and it ran just under that eleven thousand dollar mark. So as those, as those continue to age and as they continue to grow, or continue to age, that is an ongoing expense that we, that we regularly have every year. The next item down is our evidence refrigerator. Like Randy mentioned, some of the things in our agency are, are growing of age. That has been here, we believe, around forty years, that refrigerator that's in our evidence room. That is used for any biological evidence that we recover, sexual assault kits, urine samples, whatever it might be that needs to be refrigerated up on us receiving. The seals and some other things have kind of gone by the wayside on that, and, and we and, and we need to replace that evidence refrigerator. Certainly don't want that to go, come unworking and, or break and, and lose what's inside of that, so.
Did you say forty years old?
Um, yes, I believe so.
What's the brand?
I'd have to go look.
Let's go, let's go to the brand, give a testimony, get a free one.
Yes, it has held up nicely. It doesn't get used a lot, but it, but yes, it is starting to wear, so we, we need to replace that.
It runs all the time, doesn't it?
It, it does run, yes, yes. It is also very inefficient, we believe. Obviously, a forty-year-old refrigerator doesn't run the most efficiently anymore either.
The new one won't last near that long.
I, I doubt, yes, that is correct. The next item down is our load-bearing vests. Again, some of you might remember, this was a project we did about four years ago. Those load-bearing vests are worn on the outside of the uniform. It, the biggest thing that we found with them is that it transfers the weight off the duty belt and puts it up on that load-bearing vest. It gets it up off the, a lot of that equipment, that heavy equipment, it gets it off of your hips and then spreads out the weight of that on those load-bearing vests. Our officers wear those every shift, which then need to be replaced. So that is another item in twenty twenty-seven that will, that will need to replace those load-bearing vests for the officers that utilize those. The next item down is office furniture for our Special Operations Division. Part of this comes with our, the addition of our co-responder unit and just general space within the agency of needing to maximize the space that we have for offices with the addition of another position, but the addition of, of personnel as well over the last several years within the building. So this office furniture will help us bring an office that really holds two people to being able to hold three with better, better space usage and, and better equipment for that, for that new office. Questions? Our patrol rifle upgrades, again, this is a, patrol rifles were, was a big project. We did, I believe, back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, I, I believe, maybe seventeen, somewhere in that timeframe, we, we did a pretty big patrol rifle project. We were, I would say, one of a few agencies that didn't have patrol rifles readily available. And that was a great project to really enhance the department's capabilities for dealing with the world that we live in now. And the patrol rifle upgrade, what that does is it will get an individual rifle for every officer in the agency and it will allow us to replace some of our older rifles that have been in service for about ten, eleven years when this time comes. It, it also adds suppressors to those rifles, which is a safety aspect. Being in a, inside of the city, if you had to fire one of our current rifles, the hearing loss would be extreme for anybody that's within that range of, of that rifle. So those suppressors are an additional, they're an additional cost, but certainly a safety measure that allows the other officers that would be responding to that incident to continue to function without losing massive hearing loss when those rifles go off. So, so that, that side, if you see that in your CIP item, that, that is a, in, in addition to the rifles on that item. Patrol vehicles, obviously, the patrol vehicles are very important to our daily operations. That's kind of life, lifeblood of police work is making sure that we can get to where we need to be. New patrol vehicle, that hundred one thousand dollars, it's not just the cost of a, of a new Tahoe or a new Explorer, a new vehicle. It's the, on the state bids, they come in just over fifty-one thousand. That other additional cost is, is the equipment that goes inside of those vehicles. Like I mentioned, the cameras, the radar units, all of those electronics, computers within the vehicles, printers, the cage, you know, the, the list is, is pretty substantial of what, what all those additional supplies that go inside those vehicles is. So it, the hundred one thousand, one fifty, gets us, the vehicle plus makes it operational and, and able to go out on patrol. So it, that's a, every other year is what we're looking at here for the next few years. And again, that's, you know, every year that's a vehicle program analysis of, of our vehicles up to snuff. Can we, can we stretch this another year? And, and looking forward, I think we can. And, you know, Chief McSheehy, discussing that with him as well, that we can, you know, skip those years for the foreseeable, for the five-year timeframe. But obviously, every time you skip a year, it does add an additional year of that car being, or that vehicle being in, in our rotation. So as we look to that, we'll continue to work with this, with Bernardini and, and have discussions on how best to move forward with those vehicles. But looking at it now, we feel that that is sufficient for us now.
Is the replacement schedule based on age or mileage or?
Usually, we do by engine hours is what we have found to be the most, most logical way of, of doing that. Part of that is because some of those vehicles run a long time, but mileage may not be as high. But also, also on mileage, I would say on, on average, I met with Lieutenant Cox today, he oversees our fleet. On average, we swap out a vehicle right around a hundred and sixty-five thousand miles if we averaged it. The vehicle that we're looking to replace in this next year is gonna have about a hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. So again, they, they get driven, a lot of our vehicles get driven almost every shift, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So it's, it's not uncommon for them to gain a lot of mileage. And then as we roll those down into some of our specialty positions, training vehicle that we go back and forth, say, to the academy or, or just regular in-service trainings as well. So it's, yes, it, it's kind of a little bit of both and, and maintenance fees as well. We worked that in. If this vehicle isn't costing us as much as this other one, maybe we'll look to replace that one first instead.
Is any of the equipment in the used, the old car workable with new car?
It is, yes. Yep, we, we do transfer over, I would say, a, a good portion of that equipment does get transferred over, our vehicle unlocking equipment, our stop sticks. Some of those other items that don't necessarily have an electronic side to it, but a lot of them have that electronics component where the, the consoles and the lights and the sirens, those have about that five to eight-year life, lifetime cycle. So if we can work that in when we get that new car, we know that, that it's gonna continue to work or we will end up having to replace it prior to that new vehicle's lifetime.
Will you do it?
We have found, most of our old vehicles get turned over to other city departments. And, and, you know, I, I believe we have given a couple to Gerald recently, a couple to Pella Fiber over the last couple of years as well. So they, they continue to, to roll, they just aren't quite what we, what we need for patrol ready. And then the last item is, on our CIP is the source transfer switch. This is something that I'm sure most of you have seen before in the past. This is, allows for redundancy within our, the, the department should we lose electricity. Obviously, our dispatch center, you know, and the department as a whole is, needs to have that, that backup generator. The current backup generator, I believe, is from the late nineteen eighties. Is that right, Marcia?
Correct.
Correct, yes, okay. Late nineteen eighties, the backup generator that's housed over at the fire department right now. It continues to run, it continues to work, does require some occasional maintenance, but it has been continual to work. The, the source transfer switch would, and I don't see Nate here tonight, but I, the, the, it allows for that continuous, should we lose electricity on one end, it would allow it to come in from the other side is, is the layman's way of explaining that tonight. But that, that is a project that we have, we've looked at in replacing that generator. That is the best case scenarios to go with that source transfer switch to make that happen. And again, as that generator continues to age, that may be something that needs to be moved up, but for right now, it is meeting the need that we have for it. And I'm hoping to answer any questions, guys have?
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Does anybody need a break? Keep moving. Okay.
Chief, I think about taking the seat, just a brief overview of the ambulance. The numbers are, you see, and this is really indicative of just taking out the ambulance or actually incorporating the ambulance beginning ambulance services in July of two thousand twenty-two. It's important to keep in mind, nonprofit agency that served the city for the forty years before the city took over the ambulance service is an exceptional job. But there is definitely, I'd say, some issues, both from manpower issue and the agency did what it had to to serve the community. But from a manpower standpoint, it was probably behind and in need of additional manpower to continue services to the community. What's happened over the years is we've added additional staff. What you see mainly for twenty-five, twenty-six is the addition of the four paramedics that we approved last December in the budget. And that was a big reason why we approved it was to be able to drive transport services to Pella Regional Health Center as well. So that makes a lion's share of the increase of about thirty-seven percent. The revenue increase for the department is twenty-six percent. What that simply is, is the Pella Regional agreement that we have that is still relatively new and in the city. So Chief, do you want to take it from here?
Sure. First of all, I want to thank Mike, the mayor and the council. This has been probably one of the most trying and stressful years I've ever ran in this service and we've accomplished a lot, I think, over this last year. Had our study that came to fruition and, and we hired four paramedics just here in the last couple of months. We purchased an ambulance with the agreement with the hospital, secured all the equipment that goes into that, all here in a very short period of time to do that. And I, I want to thank you guys for working, working with us to get that done. I also want to thank Randy. Randy's gone. We've done a partnership with the fire department over this last year where they have started to take over our extrication, a lot of duplication of services to help save the city money. Instead of buying us extrication gear, the fire gear they've already got can do the same thing. And they've got the manpower to be able to take on that. So the partnership with the fire department has been a big thing this year as well. So starting with our CIP for the next five years, the first thing up there is a nine sixteen ambulance remount. This is a little bit of an unknown. We've got it in twenty twenty-eight. We've got that transfer ambulance now that we just purchased. We've already put over seven thousand miles on it in the short period of time we have had it. We average about seventy-five thousand miles a year across our vehicles. Sixty thousand of those we attribute to transfers out of the hospital. So now that that one ambulance is going to take the majority of the transfers, we might be able to get, well, we're not, you know, Mike, we are going to be able to get more years out of our nine-one-one ambulances, which are our more expensive ambulances. So will we have to replace nine sixteen in two thousand twenty-eight? Not sure. But it's on there because that's when it's scheduled. It'll actually be eleven years old at that time. Eight to ten years is the normal for an ambulance, but now that we're not taking it out of town anymore, it's strictly an in-town thing, we might be able to get more years out of that. With that, what's not on there is the unknown is nine seventeen, which is our transfer ambulance, is going to accumulate miles very quickly. Do not know what type of replacement, how long that's gonna last before it needs replaced. It might be five years, could be seven years. That could be stretching it, I don't know. So we'll have to see at that point in time.
Was that, was that a new one?
Yes, yep. All our other ones are remounts. That two hundred thousand is a remount price and that's just taking the box and putting it on a new chassis. That'll be the last one we can remount before we have to purchase brand-new. The one that we purchased in twenty twenty-two is a remount. We currently have one right now being remounted. We'll get it in the middle of April. And that will be, be done in that, so then two, or nine sixteen will be the last one we have to have remounted. To get a purchase, a new one is closer to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we save quite a bit of money by doing that. Our transfer ambulance was a hundred and thirty thousand, so it's quite a bit cheaper. It's easy, it's, gets better gas mileage, it rides smoother. The drawback to that is it doesn't have a lot of room to work in it for a nine-one-one when you're in town. So you need that more space, the bigger ones for your nine-one-one emergencies.
Is it safe to say, Chief, that the, the transfer ambulance doesn't get taxed as hard as far as driving it?
No.
It's, it's generally under stable conditions?
It's under highway conditions. Now, there are emergent transfers we take where it will be.
Full speed ahead.
Full speed ahead, but it's on the highway. It's not stopping and starting. Where your nine-one-ones, on your other ones, there's a big box truck that is slamming on its brakes at stoplights and slamming on the accelerator to get away from them, so. Any other questions on ambulances? The next thing we have is building repairs and one of the things that the study showed was we have, we have a very old building that is not set up for the ambulance service that we have. It, it does a very good job, but there are some shortcomings. You guys all, I think, had a tour of it when you guys, when the study was here. One of the things with that twenty thousand is actually a bathroom being added upstairs, which was a, a big deal for my employees. One of their biggest complaints was three in the morning, having to go to the bathroom and walking clear across the building and down the stairs to do that. So we will be able to add with the building repairs that with that. Another big thing with that twenty thousand, our north entryway next to the bay doors. If you look out there, the, the courtyard slants toward our building. So when it rains really hard, all that water hits that door right there and it's all rusted. That whole window frame and doors are all rusted. There's a big gap in the bottom, so that has to be replaced. It's all rusted out. That's about eight grand of that is just to replace that whole side entryway and stuff. Any questions on building repairs?
So you'd be getting water inside the building?
Yes.
That seems, from when I was on the tour, that seems low, than twenty thousand, from, from, for what?
We're, we're taking care of it. So I, I was able to actually, oh, you mean for adding the bathrooms?
Yeah.
Yeah, Vanderlinen, I think, was the low bidder on that and they came in really good for us.
That seems like a phenomenal deal to me, at twenty K.
Yep, and that replaces the door and the bathroom, so that's a big deal.
I say run with it.
Yes.
Get it done.
Yes. The next thing I have up there is cardiac monitor replacement. Cardiac monitors are supposed to last eight to ten years. We have two of them that are, we purchased in two thousand fifteen, so they are ten years old. But we've done good with, with preventive maintenance. Every year, we have a company that comes in and tests them out. They're going to be aging out as far as technology-wise. We're gonna step up from the Life Pack fifteens to the Life Pack thirty-fives in two thousand twenty-nine and replace one then and then another one in two thousand and thirty. The other ones will be a, a couple more years on down the road because we've got a new one in two thousand and nineteen, so it's about four years older. And then we just purchased our refurbished with, refurbished one with this new ambulance as well, so. We're going from about twenty-eight thousand to forty-three thousand for the new technology and all that stuff. So it's a big, big jump. Pagers, a lot of our radios that we have with the new, with the new system, the seven hundred megahertz goes live. We have some twenty-year-old radios that will no longer function. My employees that live inside the responding territory that we have have those radios. They have dual-band pagers that actually have all voice message on there that we can, I can replace all of those for a very cheap price of sixty-four hundred dollars. So it's a big savings rather than going, I think it's forty-five hundred dollars a radio. I can do it for eight hundred dollars a pager. So it'd be a big deal to be able to, be good to go in that new tower system if that happens. Ready to rock and roll with that, so.
On those pagers, do they, do you know that they've heard you? Do they respond? Can they respond to you?
They, they do not respond, but they are, the seven hundred megahertz is a completely different system. Very good coverage with. different system, is very good coverage with the Serra system here in the in the area.
So you're sure they'll hear you?
Yes, yep. Better than those radios they currently have.
Okay.
Because they're they're terrible. And Marcia could probably say she can't even hear people when they're trying to call in, so. And then the radios, we've got radios that we have to recycle through the system, about ten years is usually what you get out of them and we've got a a whole bunch of them that we got in two thousand and fifteen and then we got some in two thousand and nineteen and then again in two thousand twenty-one before we became part of the city that all are going to be cycled out and need to be replaced, so that's what the radios are. Otherwise, that's all I have.
I'm assuming that you've noticed substantial relief in the transfer program that we that we're currently using?
Oh, my goodness. With the addition of the transfer ambulance and the four paramedics, I have reduced overtime, unscheduled overtime to almost nothing.
Wow.
Which has been awesome and that's also being able to let people go on vacation.
Who want to go on vacation?
Yeah, which you guys, I think, all got an employee memo about our paramedics that went to Nepal and ended up being put in service on the airplane back.
So never really on vacation.
Yes, yep, never on vacation.
Are you are you fully staffed right now?
Right, we are fully staffed, yep. And it's made a huge difference.
Yep, I'm I'm still allowed.
We have we have not denied one transfer out of the hospital since we've signed the agreement and got everything in place.
Wow.
That's good.
Thank you, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Such a group, it's great.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, the last departments that we have for the regular session meeting this evening is City Hall and when we talk about City Hall, generally, what that is, the city administration, human resources, finances, planning and zoning, as well as the mayor and council, but also we incorporate two aspects that are contracted out through the city that are very important to the City of Pella, that's city attorney services as well as IT services for the City of Pella. Now, overall, with the increase of just over seven percent, that's somewhat being driven by attorney fees that we've had and we've had to increase the budget just to accommodate what has been increased attorney fees that we've experienced over the last few years, so it's been an expense that we just adjusted to actual levels. We have done on both of the IT and city attorney expenses, we put in new procedures at the city, well, they haven't been new, but we've just done, before we call the attorney, we make sure we go through one person in calling the attorney, at least on the staff level. Same with the IT point of contact as well, we're adopting new procedures to minimize IT expenses for the City of Pella. But the reality is, is the more services that we add at the city and the more development and that development's not bad, but generally speaking, the more services that we add, generally speaking, your attorney fees and IT services tend to go up and those two things are the current events happening at the City of Pella. One item that we do have as far as the CIP this evening is important to note that the the items that we have up here, they are somewhat lower on here. We had an error in the budget book where we had a hundred thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-eight, we thought we caught that, that should be six thousand dollars, big difference in two thousand and twenty-eight, is we had some server replacements that are actually taking place this year on it that we also had in two thousand and twenty-eight and I apologize for that in the state. One of the items that we have with the city is, we've talked about and want to spend some time on, is our compensation study for the city's workforce. We have a top-notch workforce at the City of Pella. It's very important that we stay and retain our ability to retain excellent employees that we have, so we'll attract new employees. However, when you look at state property tax, I'd say legislation that we have, I don't think we're going to be the only ones in in the state, there's a very good chance, when you talk about compensation studies, new compensation systems, generally, we've had two components where traditionally people viewed it as the cost of living component where you move the entire scale up and the merit-based system. I could see in the future with property tax reform, cities being forced to go into more of a merit-based system, that isn't all bad in in that as well, but anytime you take on differences in your compensation system, it's important to have the framework established upfront. That'll be one of the items that we will evaluate, we're giving ourselves a year to basically get prepared for when we are proposing in two thousand twenty-seven. As far as the IT side of things, one of the items that we have somewhat budgeted is a contingency item, is that forty thousand dollars for PC replacement. Want to explain, we have over a hundred PCs that we maintain at the City of Pella. We're going to go through the PCs and what we operated for years on there is generally high-end users have their PCs replaced about every five years. Similarly, what we do at police squad cars, we recycle those PCs down to not-so-intense users within the city. What's being proposed, at least at this time, the budget is contingency is to replace all the PCs within a five-year period of time at the City of Pella. That may be needed and it may not be needed, but at least we have the funds budgeted on a contingency basis if it is, but we're going to be doing an evaluation on the PC replacement with all IT services for this next year for the funds that are at least being budgeted in place if the city were to choose to go and replace all its PCs over the next five years. So with that, maybe, I don't think we had anything else for City Hall. And we're actually going to be doing planning and zoning department budget tomorrow night as well and that's going to be one of the first presentations for tomorrow night. So, Mayor, I believe that concludes the general fund departments before the closed session this evening.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments before we? I don't recall seeing the memorial there in here anywhere. Current plans for the veterans and building?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Memorial Building, what we have is, we actually have a work session and Mandy, I think it's on May twentieth?
I believe so.
Yeah. If you recall, when we talked about the Memorial Building this year, first and foremost, we've replaced the roof of the Memorial Building and the roof has been replaced. We believe to bring that building up to latest standards and address their facility repairs, it's going to require an additional somewhere between two hundred and eighty to three hundred thousand dollars. When we discussed that previously with council, council wanted to take a look at potential options for the building other than its current use. That work session is scheduled on May twentieth and because we're waiting direction from council, we're not increasing the budget, but it has a separate work session, so that we talked about on the memorial.
Okay. Then do I have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Chapter three eight eight point nine one to discuss marketing and pricing strategies or proprietary information whose city utility of its competitive position would be harmed by public disclosure, not required of potential or actual competitors, and if no public purpose would be served by such disclosure?
So moved.
For? My underhorse Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call and roll.
Randy Orton?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
James Riley?
Yes.
Heam?
Yes.
Motion passed. So for all of our guests, we'll we're going to go into closed session, but we will be coming back back into open session and there is a public comment time that if anybody wants to hang around, we'll have opportunity to speak after our closed session.